Okay, great. My name is Paul Tugley Ferry. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. It is October 25th, 2022, past the hour of 7:00 PM. This open meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency signed into law on July 16, 2022. All members of the Zoning Board of Appeals are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Zoning Board of Appeals to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comments. So I'm going to go around to each of the members to, and when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Rutan.
Aye.
Fran Backstrom.
Here.
Suzie Sizelika.
Yeah.
Brad Blanchett.
Here.
Jeffrey Luen.
Here.
All right, and then staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Connors.
Here.
Fred Litchfield.
Here.
And Robert Federico.
Here.
And Michelle Selly.
Here.
Okay. All right. So. First up on the, on the agenda for today is to consider the petition of David Cooley for a variance for reconstruction of a single-family structure on the property located at 80 Main Street, MAP 64, parcel 23, in the Main Street Residential Zoning District. Jim, do you want to, can you move David or Mr. Cooley to the?
Absolutely. Yep, so you are a co-host, so you do have all the controls as well, but I did just move them over.
Okay. Mr. Cooley, can you hear me?
You're on mute.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to remind you that the public hearing notice has to be read into the record.
Okay. What is, which is the?
Do you want me to read it? I have it in front of me.
Sure.
In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, the Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 25th, 2022, at 7:00 PM to consider the application for use variances in the Main Street Residential District and Groundwater Overlay District Area 3, submitted by David Cooley to construct a detached, single-family dwelling on the same lot as an existing multifamily structure containing three dwelling units located at 80 Main Street, Assessors, MAP 64, parcel 23. Pursuant to Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency signed into law on July 16, 2022, this meeting of the Northborough Board of Appeals will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted. And then it goes on to provide the link and the phone number for those to participate. Do you want me to read that?
I don't think we need to.
Okay. This application is on file at the Town Clerk's Office and in the Planning Department. Brad Blanchett, Clerk, October 9, 2022, and October 16, 2022.
Okay, so what we can do now is, I guess, Mr. Cooley, if you want to just give us just sort of a overview of the application and just kind of walk through sort of why you're presenting to the ZBA asking for a variance.
Thank you very much. I just want to introduce myself for those who don't know me. My name's David Cooley. This is my wife, Jessica Fidridge. Both of us are long-term residents of Northborough, 30-plus years. We both own two separate businesses in Northborough. Currently, I own Blue Water Landscaping and Jess owns Chet's Diner. This is a secondary business of ours with the real estate, more of a hands-on every day, and Jess is more of a behind-the-scenes paperwork dealing with the tenants. This spring, we purchased 80 Main Street as a three-unit family with a single dwelling, as a single family behind it. And what I seek to do is rebuild a single family using the same footprint, not making the building length times width any wider than the original footprint that it's in. I don't know if you want me to show pictures of the project right now to go over it, or if you guys would like me to show a map where you can see it in town, but it is currently, before you get to the bridge headed towards the Marlborough end of town on the opposite side of Stone Cycles.
Yeah, I mean, whatever it is that you want to show in terms of what exactly, you know, the, the new structure that you're looking to build.
That'd be great. Yep. Can I share my screen?
Sure. Are you able to share content or?
Yes, I can share content as soon as. Okay, can everyone see what I'm looking at right now, the building?
Yep.
So what I am proposing to do is build a single-story house in the same footprint that is currently there. When I say footprint, I mean the front of the house right here and the width of the house right here. This is the front side of the house, so as you pull up the driveway, this would be the first part of the house that you would see. This would be the side, at the right side of the driveway, and the back of it is actually along the Assavet River. There is no current houses that would face this, but this would be the backside of the new house with the Assavet River about 50 feet off the backside of the house. I'm going to get into this in a minute, but I just want to scroll down here. As you open the door of the new house, there would be a little porch, as you just saw in the first picture, when you walk in, there'd be a closet immediately on your right. It's a smaller house. This living area right here is only just over 500 square feet. So when you walk in, you would immediately be into the kitchen, into the living room. This walks in, there's a current bathroom right here. Another closet, and Bedroom 1 would be located in the far right-hand corner. There's a set of stairs that brings you downstairs into the second floor, and this would just open up into a open space. You could call it a family room. You could call it an extra play area. There is a second full bathroom downstairs along with a second bedroom as well. Upstairs, this brings you into the attic. There is, majority of it is finished attic storage space. It is a small house. There's not a lot of room, you know, for actual storage. So I thought it would be nice in the attic just to put a full set of stairs and give the tenant, you know, plenty of ample space to, you know, store goods or whatnot. And there's also unfinished attic space that's only about eight feet by, you know, you can say 16 feet, give or take, for finished space. The next map you're going to see is a parcel of the property. And this is Route 20 right here. So the current driveway comes up along the right side of the house, excuse me, the right side of the multifamily. And as you drive around back, this is where the parking area is. Currently, the structure that I'm seeking to rebuild is, is right here. And I don't think I need to go over any of this. Does anyone have any questions? I know I'm kind of talking fast so far. I can just keep presenting and we can wait till the end for questions, whatever you guys want to do.
Yeah, I mean, I think I kind of have a couple of questions, but I think just in terms of, so what it is you're asking for in terms of the variance, right, is basically adding an additional unit, right, or a separate building to be an additional housing unit? Is that correct?
I'm not adding, I'm taking down and rebuilding. This is currently, this is currently with the town, with the assessors, as a single-family house. So I'm not looking to add a new building. I'm looking to take down the building that's there, the house, the single-family, and rebuild it using the same footprint. So there is, there is a structure that is there right now.
Okay. I guess I'll just, I'll just start with some of my questions. So I kind of want to just get a sort of lay of the land in terms of your property. So obviously, there's two structures there, right? You have the main or the sort of the front house, which you have stated is a, is a three-unit apartment?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, and so that, you know, just looking through the case, that main house was built somewhere around 1920. And you're, you're, do you have any idea when the sort of back building or the current structure that there was erected?
On the town assessor, it says 1900. The way it reads is this actually, single-family house was potentially built prior to the three-unit being built in front. You know, it was 122 years ago. I'm not sure if that was, you know, correct or not, but the town assessor has it assessed at, at 1900 and has a three-unit assessed at 1920. So that leaves me to believe that the single-family was there prior to the three-unit.
Okay, so the back unit, 1900, the front unit, 1920. And so the, is it true around 1980 that the main house was converted to a three-unit apartment?
That's, that's what I had from the, from Bob Federico. You know, the, the, when you go and you look at the files for it, there's not, there's not a lot of files on it of when it was, you know, transferred in, but obviously, I defer to Bob on that, but, you know, if that's what Bob is, is headway on, then I would say that that's probably correct.
Okay.
We've got a lot better at, we've got a lot better at bookkeeping and, you know, files in the last 10 years than the last 40 years, so got to kind of roll with what you got.
Okay, and so from, from what I've read, around 1984, you have the three-unit front unit, or three-unit main house or the bigger house, and then the one unit in the back, basically as a single-family apartment. And so that existed essentially from 1984 to 2000. Is that, is that your understanding?
I'm not sure if that's correct. I would, I would say that, yes, at some point, that got moved into a three-family and this got moved into a single-family.
Okay. And then, and then the back unit, which is what you're looking to replace, had a fire in 2008, right?
Yes, in 2008, there was a fire here that burnt the building in the inside. It didn't structurally damage it from the outside. The windows are still intact, the doors are still intact, the chimneys still intact, foundation's still intact, but there was a fire at that point. There was a tenant living in there, and the tenant had, had been asked to move out after the fire had moved in. I had just purchased the property about six months ago. It's undetermined if someone had lived there afterwards, but it's highly, you know, unlikely that somebody had lived there.
Okay. So I guess, is it safe to assume that from when this fire happened in 2008 until around this time, no one has used this as a rental or an apartment for housing?
Correct.
Okay. And then current day, obviously, the back house is not being used. The front house is a three-unit?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then what are the layouts for the units currently?
It's a 3-2-1 stack, three bottom bedrooms, two bedrooms, and a single bedroom on the third floor.
Okay. So a total of six beds?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So when you purchased, you said you purchased the property six months ago? Is that March?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so obviously, when you purchased the property in March, you were aware of sort of the current setup of the back building not being sort of inhabitable and, you know, usable, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, does anyone, before I get into sort of some of the documents from the other boards, the staff, does anyone from the staff have any questions or comments?
I think what I'd like to do, Paul, is Glenn, my land surveyor is actually here with me as well. While I'm sharing the screen, I'd like to pull up his mapping of it and just kind of go over just a few different punchline items while I'm still sharing the screen before I stop, if that's okay with you?
Yep, that's fine.
Hi, good evening. My name's Glenn O'Donoghue. I'm a professional land surveyor. I have an office here in town. It's O'Donoghue Survey and Mapping, and I've assisted Dave, you know, with this project. You know, he brought me on when, you know, he, he thought he would, you know, propose to rebuild, you know, this back, single-family structure. So, you know, we've been in front of Conservation Commission, and, you know, they've approved the project, you know, as is, you know, with the current grading and erosion control measures. So there's, you know, there's no, no, you know, extensive issues with, you know, what the, the conservation, you know, wanted us to do out there, you know, more or less just, you know, providing the erosion control measures, you know, to the Assavet River. You know, this, the, the terrain out there is, you know, somewhat of a gentle slope from the driveway, you know, heading down to the Assavet River. And, you know, what we're proposing is, you know, to, to maintain the existing grading, you know, as, as best as possible. You know, obviously, with removing, you know, an existing structure, there, there would be some overdig involved, you know, to, to construct a new foundation with footings. But we're really not pushing, you know, any of the grading, you know, outside of, you know, what the overdig would be. You know, the, the back parking lot is, is fairly level, you know, until you come to the side of the building and it starts to head down towards the street. You know, all of, all of the grading for the, you know, the back parking lot is pretty level right up to the doorway of the existing building. You know, there's, there's an old stone wall that's, you know, between the existing building and, you know, heading towards the Assavet River. You know, it kind of holds up, you know, the grades that are, that are there now. So, you know, we, we would be proposing to, you know, remove and replace a portion of that wall, you know, to accommodate the, the walkout for the basement. You know, there's, there's only, you know, we're only looking at about four feet of, of grade difference between the existing foundation and the bottom of the wall, you know, so with, with the overdig of the foundation, you know, reconstructing, excuse me, any walls would, would only be about two to three feet, you know, in height.
You know, I don't want to cut in on Glenn, but that was, you know, these marks right here are what Conservation, we went in front of Conservation and also, you know, groundwater. And as you can see right here, this is the, you know, the no disturbance zone, and this is the no structure zone. So that wall is pretty close to the no structure zone, but that wall will have to get dismantled at some point for our overdig for the new foundation. And Conservation is aware of that, and that was part of our, that was part of our deal with them was to maintain this the best we can, but they are understanding that that wall will come down and need to be rebuilt at some point.
Yeah, and they, you know, they wanted us to, you know, keep everything, you know, the limit of work, you know, within that 35-foot no structure, not, not going anywhere past the 35-foot no structure. So, you know, there, you know, i-if we were allowed to get to the 25-foot no disturb, there probably wouldn't be any walls needed, you know, could be graded out, you know, fairly smoothly. But e-even with, you know, removing the wall as is and replacing it, you know, we're not, we're not looking at more than two to three feet of height difference between, you know, what the bottom of the foundation would be, the, the foundation floor, you know, to the top of the wall. You know, and everything else around the building itself, you know, with exception of the overdig, is going to stay as is.
Okay. So I guess, just in terms of the Conservation Commission, I assume that you guys have read sort of the decision that they had, and there, there, you don't have any issues with any of the special conditions that they've sort of tacked on to the end of their decision?
Negative, no. We're perfectly fine with what they, they had said.
Okay.
And that goes for, I'm sorry, that goes for the groundwater as well. They had, they had a few underlining, you know, issues that they wanted us to adapt to, and we had no issue meeting the groundwater, you know, few punchline items that they wanted as well.
Okay. So I guess, looking at the groundwater letter, all Fred's comments with regards to the conditions, you know, obviously, they're connected to town water and sewer. I believe it's been noted that it's already connected. Fred, have you received sort of the impervious cover calculations?
I know. No, at this point, I've not received those yet, and they typically would come at the time the building permit is applied for, so I was not expecting to get it between that meeting and this meeting.
Okay. And then I guess the other question I had was the, the roof runoff. I don't believe that the site plan accounts for sort of the drywells, I think, Fred, that you were looking for? Is that correct?
Yes. The, the site plan does not indicate the drywell locations. The site plan that came in yesterday, the plan that's on the screen now.
Okay. And Fred, just to confirm, you're looking for drywells to be included for both the new structure and the existing multifamily dwelling? Is that correct?
I, I am, to the extent that it's practical, that the, the discussion at the end of the groundwater meeting was that they would recharge through drywells as much as possible, but the goal was not to have them have to rip up the parking lot where the, the parking spaces are in the back of the building. So if it was possible, I want to try to get the downspouts and the gutters to run along this, the front and rear of the existing building, and then discharge some drywells between the structure and Route 20, so that it was in a lawn area. The goal was not to have them have to rip up the driveway if it wasn't already being disturbed. So we agreed to work with them to get as much recharge as we could, but clearly, everything that's on the proposed building to be rebuilt would be recharged.
Okay, thank you. And then I suppose, I guess, for the applicant, you don't have any other issues with any of the other comments that's listed in Fred's letter?
No, sir. No, and during the meeting, when Fred and I were talking about the, you know, the runoff in the drywells, we'd actually talked about potentially meeting at some point on-site just to come up with the best plan of action. That's why we hadn't put anything yet, and whatever Fred finds suitable for the drywells, we will, you know, conduct, and that can definitely be in order conditions that we're willing to, you know, put in writing as well, whatever, however you see it.
Okay. Being that we have the site plan up, the staff or the board have any questions at this time to reference any of the site plans? Fran, I think you have your hand up?
I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So just clarification. The new stone wall that you're putting up to replace the old one, can I assume that's actually going to protect the wetlands behind it better than the existing wall, regardless of whether you were putting a new structure? Is that why they're asking you to rebuild it, or is it because it's in the way while you're building?
Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, replacing the, you know, replacing the wall, you know, will, will help with, you know, holding back, you know, any of the, you know, the grade that's there. You know, it's, you know, pretty flat at the bottom of the wall, you know, and it's, it's really a gentle slope, you know, from, from the bottom of that wall, you know, down to, to the river. And I mean, we're, we're looking at, you know, close to 60-plus feet, you know, between the wall and the river. So, and it's, it's all grassy area right now, you know, so I don't, I don't think that there's really a lot of runoff that's, that's happening in that area. You know, even with the existing, you know, building there and the, the existing grades, you know, I don't see a lot of, you know, real runoff happening, you know, into the river. You know, the, one of the, one of the conditions that, you know, Conservation asked was, you know, for us to maybe put up, you know, some type of barrier, you know, which would be maybe boulders, you know, along the the 35-foot no structure zone, just to, you know, delineate that, you know, there is a wetland there, you know. So I think even, you know, placing, you know, some large boulders there would help with any runoff also.
Thank you. And just another question on the parking. I know there was something about, right now, it's not currently striped, but it will be. So you're not, you actually had more parking spaces than were needed for the multifamily, so that's how you're accommodating this additional one-bedroom that really only needs one. Oh, it's a two-bedroom, so it would need two spaces as well? Like, you're not, you're not making the driveway any bigger?
Yes, ma'am. There was adequate parking from the beginning with the, with the, with adding this as a two-bedroom, going from a two-bedroom to a one-bedroom, and yes, there was, there was adequate parking.
Okay, and then one additional question. When you said that the third floor of the attic was getting proper stairs in case they wanted to use it for space, it would not, would you be concerned if it was limited to not be able to be a bedroom? That it would just be added open space?
No, it's just going to be added open space, and like I said, even, you know, with the basement downstairs, that doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, a bedroom, you know, as well. That could be open space as well. You know, what we're trying to do is essentially create affordable living, you know, in the downtown district. I don't know how many of these meetings that you watch, but, you know, several times a year, it's brought up with the affordable housing in the downtown district, and this is a perfect example of a, a small- And uh, this is a perfect example of a uh, a small house that a local family could afford and live into and. And utilize the uh local uh facilities at a affordable cost.
Oh, absolutely, okay, and so then my last question um through the chair, if now we're at a a different point, I do have a question for staff. Because I just need to, I got lost in the, it started out as a special permit with the special permit site plan approval to a variance. And I, I didn't see where that got triggered in the readings I did, so if somebody could just clear that up for me real quick, let's.
The, the, excuse me. The applicant originally came to me um with a certain amount of information. And typically demolishing and rebuilding a building, if it's within the same. Footprint in the same volume, uh, at first blush, um, is is allowed by special permit. And and then the applicant said, well, the house is gonna be bigger than the current building as it is now. Um, which is, which would trigger special permit. In the meantime, it was discovered that this particular building had burned. And was um, uh, the assessor at the time in February of oh eight. Uh, declared the building uninhabitable, which really wasn't his purview. But that was his statement and the owner at the time said he's not in a hurry to rebuild, so as of the date of the fire, until now. Um, that house has not been used. The uh, two-year pre-existing non-conforming protection. Um, has long since gone away, um, you know, the 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 main building now is pre-existing non-conforming. Yeah, you wouldn't be able to build it in that particular lot today, um, having the. Um, back garage apartment that burned, um, originally was. Without the two-year exclusion or the two-year protection, would have been allowed to rebuild, but since the two-year protection has gone away. It now requires variance because it it would not be allowed to be built.
Got it, thank you. No more ques- no more questions, thank you.
Uh, Mark.
Okay, um, uh, first of all, there are uh currently connections for both water and sewer. To the uh existing burnt out building, Fred?
Yep.
Yes, sir, uh, Mark, there is, if you look on the screen right here, I'm still sharing my screen, correct?
Right, yeah.
So this is the current gas, there's uh gas on the property. This is a current gas line with a gas valve right here. This is the current water going to the single family. Um, this is the sewer that is going currently right now, it's on town sewer, there is no septic. And my electrical is, comes from the house in the corner, the three family in the corner right here. It goes to a telephone pole and from here, there's an above ground line that goes to the corner of the house. Uh, currently, right now, the meter socket is removed off of the house. Um, but you can still see the pole and the meter socket and where everything was.
Okay. Um, is there any chance that these are inoperable and will have to be redug or replaced?
Um, I don't believe so, uh, there is shut, there is shut offs here. Uh, that I could do a test, there's a sewer cleanout right here. That, you know, potentially there could be a test to make sure that it's, that it is uh, that it is operable. The gas is 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 operable, I had a um, a letter from uh. The gas company stating of when, when they had shut it off and uh, they just need, I think, about sixty days to to reconnect it. Um, but uh, as for operable, I've I've got uh. No issues at all with with finding them to be, you know, operable once the house gets built.
And Fred, your opinion?
Uh, I see what's on the plan here. I checked the records in the DPW and they do not have a record of the structure in the back being connected. And the fashion that they are connected with the water line going through the existing multifamily building. And then onto the back structure is not how we would do it, there would be a a separate line and a separate meter um off to that, so. There may be uh some work that needs to be done should the project go forward and a separate line being installed. The similar thing with the sewer, we don't, you see where the sewer pipes come together there. Um, usually there would be a manhole or there would be a separate uh sewer line for the other structure, so. I see that they are connected, although none of the records in the DPW indicate that to be. The case in terms of water and sewer bills, but that may be simply because the rear building hasn't been occupied since two thousand and eight, so. Again, like I said, the records, the records are are sketchy when it comes to that.
Point of my question is, is there a chance that the parking lot will have to be dug up to supply utilities anyway?
Possibly, possibly, he, I mean, he could, he might be able to do it around the back and. He's gonna have to do some work near the new structure uh to put that foundation in and and rebuild that area. Um, in terms of how much he has to rip up, uh, I would assume the goal would be to be mi- as minimal as possible. And we would work to with him on that effect.
Okay, um, the other question is, uh, how far above the river level is the. Uh, floor of the basement here approximately, do we know? Is there any danger of the river flooding the basement?
No, so so there's, we show a flood zone line, um, so there's a, there's a wetland line. And a flood zone line that's shown in blue, um, which is at an elevation of two sixty six. The the river itself is around two sixty two and a half, um, so, you know, flood zone only coming up to two sixty six. The the basement floor elevation is is two seventy three point two, you know, so it's, it's another seven feet higher than the floodplain line.
And and just so you know, Mark, just for a point of reference, sir, that um, there's also another dwelling down here. Uh, there's actually two dwellings down here, in order for this basement to flood. This building and Route twenty would have to be under the water.
Yeah, okay. Right, that's it.
Thank you.
Suzie, see you anyways.
Hi, um, first of all, I want to say thank you for the site visit, it was a, it was a lot of help. Um, I hope we have more of those in the future, I told Paul and Laurie I would be plugging site visits, because they really are very helpful. Um, I had a couple of questions, I didn't know if you had a layout of the, the original home right now that you could show? Or explain, just because, um. I don't know if uh, if the other board members, you know what I mean, know what it, know what it looks like.
Yes, ma'am, I, I uh don't, what I can do is I can just pull this up. And just uh, if you guys could just bear with me, um, when you walk into the house currently. Right now, um, when you walk in, you would be in the living room area as you walk in. And there is a dining room air, so this right now is uh, is opens, is open space. Um, the bathroom is gonna stay the same, the bathroom is currently located right here. Um, this wall and this wall is currently here, so there is a a a a walkway or a um. Like a small hallway that comes through here and then currently, this was the original kitchen. Um, that would be located in this spot as well.
Yes, okay, just beca- and I wanted to make sure my bearings were correctly too, because I'm not always the best, but I thought that's, that's what it was from my memory. Um, my next question, you had uh mentioned affordable housing, is this gonna be part of the affordable housing program?
That would be something that I would uh, look into, I'm always um, I'm always interested in. Uh, different avenues to support the town, actually currently, um, right now. At one of my five units in Northborough, I took on a Afghan um female refugee. That had come uh from Afghanistan with her child and relocated, um. Kind of sinks the heart a little bit, I'm a Afghanistan um combat veteran. So when uh, a group of, I think, twelve ladies from Northborough had established. Um, that and they called me and it was a, you know, it was a yes from the beginning for that, so uh, if somebody was to approach me. With the affordable housing, um, I would definitely consider it and if they want to sit down and propose something to me, I'd be more than happy to uh, hear them out.
And then, um. I was wondering if you had any pictures, any pictures of the back? Or maybe, um, I know we took pictures during this, this.
Yeah, I actually. Yep, give me one.
Those I think will be really helpful too.
Give me one second.
It's, it's, if you don't make these drawings and you don't work with them every day, it's, it's sometimes hard to picture, you know, slopes and. The wall, where the wall is and the foundation and everything.
Can I clock this without going out of it? I'm looking for, so this was the pictures that were provided to you from Lori. So it'd probably be best if I shared this, just so everyone's already had an eye on it. Um, so in reference point, the three unit is where my uh mouse is currently right here. This is the side of the uh, of the house, um, currently right now. This is the backside, it was raining out that day, as you can see our raincoats and.
There, that's, that's me.
Yep.
I made one of the pictures.
And this is the backside of the house, so the Assavet River was over here, you can see our, our stakes from our conserva- conservation. Um, meaning those are our stakes that we just had on our other plot. And this is the side, so this is the retaining wall that was actually an old foundation built. To uh, you know, to hold up the house and hold up the parking lot as well, so this is the wall. That will be uh partly taken down for my over dig and uh will be rebuilt to probably about. You know, two feet, so my back of the house, foundation, walkout. Will be right here and this wall will be taken down and with the grades on the left side and the right side. My guess is this wall is about two feet tall, give or, give or take. And this is the um side, you can see my truck parked, this, this is where the vehicles parking would be. And this is the uh, the far side, this is uh, would be facing Route twenty on this side.
And then, um, and. For um, for the use variance, there has to be like a severe detriment. And that would be that the parking lot would lose its stability without all of this?
Yes, ma'am, um, I mean, this is a, this is a, you know, a great change here, which shows. On the foundation plan, which where we'd be stepping down the foundation to accommodate the hillside. Um, you know, this is obviously the Assavet River is here, we want to protect that, you know, as a uh, the the best that we can. You know, with removing this, um, you know, my, my, my parking lot for this unit is being held up. You know, with the foundation and with the stone from here and uh. You know, I think with a concrete foundation, it would even uh, it was, it would even do a better job than the, than the stone is doing currently.
And then, um, thank you, and I apologize if I'm repeating some of the stuff I asked.
No, no, I appreciate you coming out, I think you got a, you got a great, great eye on it and uh, you know, gives you a better vision of it, so go ahead and ask as many questions as you want. I've got no issue answering anything.
And I, I also try to ask sometimes things that I'm wondering if like, you know, other people are thinking of as well. Um, Bob, I was confused about, um, what you said about the assessor's records and Paul, um, Chair. Mr. Chair, if it's not all right to ask, like during this time, I was just wondering, because he had said that. The building should be demoed for the building inspector, um, on that assessor's record in the past. If that had any weight or?
I, I went back and reexamined the assessors' records and the building department records. And the only thing I had was that there was some sort of a discussion that went on. Between the um town assessor at the time and the owner. Um, talking about that the building should be condemned, I, I have no. Uh, documentation from the building inspector, who was the only person who was legally allowed to condemn a building. Um, so there was discussion of it and the owner. Had said, um, basically that the owner stated that he's not interested in doing anything in a hurry about it, about the condition of the building. Had. And it's been different and maybe a different building inspector, uh, the place would either be ordered to be raised or or fixed within a certain amount of time. Having said that, it's been damaged by fire and it's been that way ever since the date of the fire. You know, the, 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 records that the town kept back in those days aren't as good as what we have now. Whereas everything has to be documented, so, you know, the building was discussed about being condemned or demolished or whatever. Nothing, obviously, never was done, so uh, the building sits itself. And um, as I said before, one of the things that comes up to play is that, you know. At the date of the fire, the building as a residence. On this property and in this particular section of town was uh, and enjoyed, basically, it's, we don't, we don't call it grandfathering anymore. We call it pre-existing non-conforming, um, if you have such a building that is damaged, destroyed. Um, the owner has two years to rebuild it, okay? Um, obviously, it's been longer than two years, so that pre-existing um, non-conforming condition. Um, two-year window is gone.
And, and, um, and could, could, um. David rebuild or not rebuild, but renovate this building, or is that, I'm just trying to get a, you know, like the full picture?
He could, hi- his option is to tear it down and clean up the, clean up the situation. If he proposes to build anything there, um, it would have to be, you know, all, basically all bits rough and. He would have to comply with today's current zoning um, regulations. And, you know, number one, again, I say it's been more than two years for any kind of um, pre-existing non-conforming enjoyment of the. Of the building, uh, there's also, uh, I believe something in the zoning bylaw that talks about two primary residences on the same lot. Um, so there's, there's a few moving parts to this. In terms of, you know, what, what you folks need to decide upon.
Okay, thank you, I think that's everything. My notes for, on a couple of different sheets, but thank you.
I'll just say Brad or Jeff, do you guys have any questions while we have, while we're looking at the site?
I'll go first.
Brad, uh, Brad, you, you have any questions?
Uh, yes. So, um, coolly, thank you uh, for seeing us for the onsite. It uh, walked through a couple of weeks ago, um, one question. Question is, I noticed when, during the walkthrough, we had four mailboxes in the main residence. Is that fourth mailbox part of this other dwelling or is this? Can you possibly go from, yeah, you have three. Units today, can you go to four, or is this, we adding, go from four to five, does that make sense?
Uh, you kind of broke up a little bit, but I think it was something to do with the mailboxes, this is staying as a four unit. Um, there was four mailboxes on the original unit that was simply. Uh, for my understanding, was just to accommodate the post office, so that, that mailbox. Uh, that's in front of the property, that's on the deck, will continue to s- continue to stay there, just to accommodate. Uh, the local uh, post office, if that answers your question, because you kind of broke up a little bit.
Sorry. Yeah, uh, no, so basically what I'm asking, are there four units with, in? In the the current, the main house and.
No, there's only three, there's only three units current in the main house.
And that's it?
Yes, sir.
There's no option for, okay. And um based on your hardship, is there a specific reason why? You're going from five hundred-ish square feet to sixteen hundred square feet. Uh um it's so, just say you want to completely tear it down, we have today, kind of keep it within reason. Uh as far as square footage or.
Yeah, I think I was.
For footage to.
Yeah, what I think I was just doing.
Drive by.
Yeah, what I think I was doing and my goal was to maximize the space. Um as best as I could to try to provide a a a smaller house. Uh you know, for a local family to be affordable, um it was really my discretion. To do the basement that I wanted to do, but the main footprint of the house is still the same. Obviously, we can't bi- build rock foundations anymore, they have to be, you know, fro- frost foundations with a frost wall. So that was me really just taking advantage of um, you know, the full basement to provide more living space. To make it more adaptable, uh you know, for a for a family in the downtown district.
Okay, yeah, I mean, uh the only reason why I'm asking that too is. Just based on history and I'm not saying you uh a- at all. Um because I think this is the first time you've been in front of us, well, uh I've been on the board. But uh like unfinished or partially finished attic can somehow turn to a three-bedroom, a third bedroom. And.
Yes, sir.
Kind of disrupts uh bylaws with parking and and like that. So that's why I'm kind of going down this this path with questions. So you it's a one-bedroom today, you go into a two-bedroom, the walkout basement. But the partially finished attic raises concerns for me as far as, and you know, and you're you're gonna. The landlord and, you know, what they do inside those four walls is up to them, but. I can see that turning into a third bedroom.
Correct, so so what I would do is I would just.
Bylaws, that just doesn't fit.
Right, what I would do is I would file a deed restriction for a uh a two-bedroom um on this property. So that would only allow it to be a two-bedroom and uh and all my leases that I have, you know, currently. It 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 explains very clear, you know, how many people are allowed in the house, how many bedrooms there are. And uh that's a process that, you know, myself and Jess, you know, vent through to find the right, um you know, tenant. Uh but I can definitely see your point of view, Brad, um at the end of the day, the basement uh. Is in a um like a selling point to me, um it's just a acquired space. That I could potentially provide more living space for a a a larger family. So uh at the end of the day, if that was decided that, you know, you can't do something in the basement, it wouldn't uh really impact me as well. It would just impact somebody trying to move in there that that is looking for affordable housing, you know, in the downtown district.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Uh Jeff, do you have any questions or?
Uh I am, I'm struggling with whether I have questions or not and I just, I don't think I do. I think the record is pretty clear, um and I'm struggling because I like the. The uh applicants and what they want to do and what they would like to do, I just am struggling with the path forward from. The zoning and what is what is possible, so. Um but it the materials and everything that's been presented is clear and thought out, I'm sorry I missed the walkthrough. I'm not sure if that would have changed my thoughts, but um beyond that, I don't have anything.
Okay. Um so. Oh no, hello? Can you guys still hear me?
Yep.
Sorry, um so I just wanted to. Just uh or does anyone else on the board have any other questions at this time? I don't see any hands raised, um.
Just one?
Yep, Mark.
Yes.
Uh yeah, is it uh your intention to uh keep this as four rental units on one property?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there's no interest in separating it or uh, alright.
No, sir, no, not at all.
Right, so so I guess just to piggyback, right, I mean, you're going from three units in the existing multifamily dwelling, right? And then obviously, the proposal is is that you're building a separate building in the the foot, same footprint that currently exists. It will be separate quote-unquote unit, right, and then that is the fourth unit that we're discussing. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, and that single-family unit, although there was a fire and no one has been living there. Has been paying taxes on it since two thousand eight. There was no tax break, there was no, um you know, this is a inhabitable building that has continued. To pay taxes on it as a single-family dwelling since two thousand eight and prior to that.
Okay, um I guess then, you know, in one of the letters, I I don't remember which one. Um talked about sort of the assessor's appraisal on this and I and I don't know if this is a question necessarily for staff or. If uh Mister Cool, you know this this answer, but. You know, if you look at the assessor's classification for this property, um they classified it as a four-to-eight unit apartment. With an apartment building built around nineteen twenty. Um with four units, three baths, uh a three-quarters bath, thirteen rooms and five bedrooms. Um so do you know, do you have any idea why there would be a disconnect? Between the assessor's office and sort of what the current layout is, right? So if your main uh unit has a three-bedroom, a two-bedroom and a one-bedroom. Which is six, why it would be classified as such?
I'm not sure, I've had, I, when you were talking, I pulled up the current assessment. Um with this unit, um I'm not sure uh. About the about the unit, the three-bedroom uh unit in front, but this is the current uh card. For the building that I'm proposing of rebuilding right now. And it says down here, built about nineteen hundred, having clapboard exterior and tile roof cover, this is one unit, two bedrooms. There are two rooms, excuse me, one bedroom, one bath, zero half baths. So this is a current um assessor card uh that the town had on file that I printed for the rebuild of the building. Uh just talks over here about um, you know, the tile and the hardwood floors and the heat system and stuff.
Okay. Was it, was this prior to your, do you know when this uh, is this available on the town assessor website or did you get this directly from them?
I believe I got this from the assessor's office, I had gotten it almost, almost a month and a half ago. Um I can't remember exactly, you know, and I had so many different moving parts with this, I can't exactly remember where this pulled from. But uh, you know, it talks about the value on the building, uh you know, the front building and also the back building as well right here. Obviously, once the house is rebuilt, the ta- the assessor will come out and I'm sure the value will be, you know, greater than twenty-two thousand dollars. So there's a positive for the town right there.
I'm pretty sure we can all agree that assessor will come out and make sure that that's adjusted. Uh Suzie, I you're, I think your hand is raised.
Yeah, I was, um, I I don't know a lot about the um assessor's office besides what you said, Paul, that they. That they do come out and I've met them that way, um I was wondering, do we know if um the former owner had applied? So that he would pay lesser tax or if he just kept paying it? I know that the condition stated on on the card that we just saw that it was dilapidated.
Yeah, part part of this, um I'll just chime in real quick, was the gentleman, um sadly enough, passed away. About a month after I bought this, so that was where some of the, you know, issues lied with trying to find out. When the last time somebody lived in there, had somebody lived in there and I had kind of disagreed with it. Because uh I I felt like it was the right thing to do by, say, the two thousand, you know, and eight. But essentially, the the gentleman had passed away and 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 I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. Um if he had applied or not, I I mean, I I would imagine you could probably go through the town records, but. The way it's assessed right now is is it's set, it's been assessed the same way for as long as I could read back and that was like twenty years. Um you know, it's the same taxes, obviously, every year you get your increase, but nothing had a, nothing had changed, I, from what I can see.
Okay, thank you.
Uh so I ju- I had a question about the the parking area, so I think in one of the notes it said that the parking area becomes structurally unsound. Succumb to the sloping topography. Um is that like, did you have like a uh structural engineer come in and give you that assessment or is that just? Um you know, uh in in assessment you got by just looking at the property?
Hey, you you you, I don't know if it's if it's my computer or you, but can you just reiterate what you said, sorry about that?
No, sorry, uh you know, there was a a statement made where uh, you know, the parking area will become structurally unsound and succumb to the sloping topography. Um you know, basically, you know, the what were the reasons for asking for the variance to sort of rebuild uh the current structure? And I was just, I was I was asking if you've had like a, you know, a a structural engineer come out and make that assessment? Or is that just more of a self-assessment in terms of, you know, this, if you, this building were to be raised, right? How how do we determine that, you know, uh the parking lot?
No, that was just a, that was just a uh an assessment um between, you know, myself and the architect. And my construction crew that had a a pre-meeting, um you know, prior to uh the purchase of uh this property. And moving forward, that was something that just we determined between us.
Okay, and then, you know, as we're looking at the site plan here, sort of those little circles that sort of run. Parallel to the, that is, that is essentially a retaining wall, but that it's one of those rock, old rock retaining walls, is that correct?
Yes, sir, something that you would stand, seem standard, see standard in uh, you know, a house being built in the nineteen hundreds. If anyone has any old homes.
Okay, and and I guess just like, is that, is is my interpretation of that rock wall being approximately two to three feet in height? Is that correct?
Um. Yeah, I think, you know, we have a a top grade at the parking lot of, you know, two, two eighty-one, two eighty-two. You know, and right there at the wall, you know, and and towards the bottom of that wall along the parking lot, about two seventy-nine, two seventy-eight. So, you know, it could be two to three feet in that area. Um you know, one, the one thing that that I, you know, noticed when I did research on this property. Is that where where you are seeing those circles, um there was a an existing building. That actually um came into, you know, where those circular um walls are. You know, it was, it was a bigger building, which I believe dated back to that nineteen hundred date. Um you know, I think just over the years, it just, it got, it ended up being smaller to what it is today.
And uh is your plan to replace that wall or just leave it there uh during sort of construction of or, you know, uh redoing this building?
So our, you know, our plan, you know, shows that, you know, we are going to maintain existing grades as best we could. And that was our proposal to conservation also, you know, that we, you know, we try not to touch, you know, anything that's, you know, outside of. Uh the over dig of the foundation, um you know, and that they, you know, they were, they were happy with, you know, that proposal. You know, and not disturbing, you know, any more ground than we had to.
Okay. Um and then, just in terms of the the height of the structure, um. I think there was a comment again about it it just, you know, becoming a higher or or becoming bigger in terms of the height. Um can you just confirm, like, what is the current height of the building today? And then what is the 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 new current height of the proposed building?
There's probably, I would say, maybe a four to five different. You know, would you would you think that four to five feet different on the roof line? Opposed to what is there currently right now, um especially with, you know, the stormwater and and that sort of stuff being caught. Into the drywells, you know, the roofs have to be pitched uh certain ways, um you know, with the attic, the way it is. With that's the space that's in there, if you look at the plans, um I mean, that's a pretty tight, that's a pretty tight attic. Um you know, you're not going to be walking around there comfortably by no means, especially if you're over six feet tall. Yeah, I think if you go back to some of the existing pictures, um you know, it shows the existing roof. You know, relatively flat, you know, probably not, you know, not more than um ten feet high. Uh you know, and and I think his proposed plans, you know, show more of a pitched roof. You know, to accommodate, you know, what what today's standards are, but, you know, the the building itself, it will meet. You know, height standards, um you know, under current zoning. The building was designed to meet the town bylaws and the town building um as well. Um you know, or or whatnot, so that building was designed by an architect to uh, you know, structurally be sound. And also meet uh the town, you know, bylaws and, you know, comply with the building department as well.
Yep, okay, thanks, uh so yeah, so I think um Greg, on your plans, you you have sort of from the. Almost from where the finished grade is to the top of the roof is about about twenty-one feet and you're estimate. You estimated the current roof height to be about eleven or twelve feet, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, that's an estimate, we didn't, you know, I haven't measured the the current height, but, you know, just visually and and seeing the pictures, yeah. I I would say that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I I wanted to ask uh another question um about sort of um. The lighting on the outside. Um so I believe the lighting is going to be, the existing lighting is those red tri- uh triangles and then. On this new building, right, there's just going to be one light in the front?
Yes, sir, this is it, this is existing lighting right here in the red. And this is actually the existing light that is currently on the uh the house at the moment. And and it would be a proposed location, yeah.
Okay, and so there's no changes to 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 the current lighting that exists on this site plan?
No, sir.
Is is the parking lot uh lighted at all currently or do you have plans to light it in the future?
Yes, sir, these these, this light right here um is on this side of the parking lot, right here, this this current light. Floodlight, this is actually a a a light as well and it goes probably closer to ten. And these two lights right here are both floodlights as well, if you would like, um and the board decides, I could always add a light here. Um I don't think it's necessary, but if that's what you decide as a board, I'm I'm willing to uh, you know, take that into consideration and 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 do what's needed.
Okay.
I also uh, I also went around for one day. And I know you guys saw it in my letter that I sub- submitted um to the town planner. And I had uh twelve, I believe it was ten, either ten or eleven. Um letters of recommendation for this project, four butters, now that's a direct, those are direct butters. That property lines uh touch my property lines, so I had uh those letters of recommendation um submitted. Uh I believe it was either ten or eleven from a local butters as well. In favor, in favor of it.
Okay. Um. Next question I had, so the the dumpster plan, um can you just kind of give an overview of? Uh like what the current setup is for the dumpster and then what the proposed plan is there?
So the current setup right now, so um I provide a four-yard dumpster for uh this uh location. this, uh, location and it's dumped once a month. There's a adequate space here. This is actually the size of a, a, a parking space. Um, so if, uh, if I was to get rid of the dumpster, I would actually add, um, parking that I, but I don't need that currently. Um, what I do is I provide this dumpster for these tenants. So down here on Route twenty. We don't have a, uh, a bunch of just single, you know, trashcans. I'm sure everybody on this board has drove up and down Route twenty at some point. And just seen trash littered everywhere. So this is just a, uh, a perk that I, uh, give to my tenants. To have a dumpster on site, so we don't have to have issues of, uh, you know, trash and, and debris flying all over.
Okay. Uh, and then I guess, you know, uh, just for Lori or, or Bob, um, are there any issues with the current? Or the proposed setup for the dumpster? Or the existing lighting in terms of requirements that they need to get to certain code, if, if need be?
Um, so that the dumpster enclosure is a requirement that's in the planning board rules and regulations. So that's one of the, uh, suggesting comments from, uh, the groundwater advisory committee. Is that he comply with the planning board rules and regulations. So, um. I was just pointing out the issues, uh, in the rules and regs that are currently areas of non-compliance.
Okay. Yeah, I assume the applicant, you, you had mentioned earlier that you have no, um, issues with, with the groundwater's comments and obviously bringing that to, uh, up to compliance. Is that correct?
Yeah, if, if that's what you, uh, if that's what you guys want me to do and you want me to put a, uh, a stockade fence around that. Um, I'm more than willing to comply if that's what it needs to do to, uh, you know, get this project moving.
So does anyone else have any other questions, whether staff or board with regards to? Yep, Brad, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, if I may. So, um, Paul, you'd mentioned, Mr. Chair, you have mentioned, uh, a few minutes ago. Um, the, the height of the current structure. So if I walk in at floor level, at parking lot level. What is the height of the current structure? I know that, uh, since I went in there, I know the, uh, uh, the, uh, the, uh, roof is kind of warped. But what is the height of the current structure today? And what are you proposing for the current height if this project is approved?
Um, I believe the current height is probably somewhere around six and a half feet. And I think Bob could actually answer this question i- i- if he's, if he's available for a second. Um, I believe building, there is a certain building code that has a height, um, restriction for the first floor. I don't know if I'm, uh, if I'm correct on that, Bob or not.
I think it's higher than six and a half.
Um, under the building code, typically the first floor, um, you're limited to about twelve feet. And that's primarily because if you have a staircase that exceeds approximately twelve feet. Um, you need to have a landing because the stairway is too long, uh, to do in one flight. Um, you know, you could, you can have, you know, floors of twenty, thirty feet tall if you want, as long as it doesn't. As long as the building doesn't, uh, go above the, um, the overall height regulation. But, you know, in terms of practicality, you know, the, the twelve feet is max. Um, a lot of houses are going nine and ten feet. Um, but, you know, the minimum standard is still only seven and a half feet.
So today it's probably, what, seven feet and then from. Walking in to, through the front door to the top of the roof. What are we talking about? So I know, uh, Mr. Coolie, you were.
You're wa- you're walking in, you mean, do you mean Brad, when you walk in the front door, if you look up, how high is the ceiling going to be?
Yes, not the ceiling, the roof, the roof today, the, the, the total perch of the roof or, um. I know I'm screwing this up, screwing up the terminology.
Yeah, I understand.
It, it's, it's probably about, it's, 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 it's probably between, if I was to guess, twenty to twenty-two feet, give or take.
One of the things to remember is that if you're talking about. The height of a, of a house, um, it's measured, measured from the mean grade, which is the average grade number. To the average height of the roof, which is about mid-plane on a, on a slope. Okay, um, so. You know, what he's got here, I've got, I've got a set of the plans in front of me.
To the chair, could we have the slides that we're looking at the, the house again instead of the plot? Might be easier for us to, the, though, the new house.
Yep, I'm looking for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you, it's, uh, if you go to the plans, it's, I think it's AJ two.
Yeah.
There's a sectional.
There it is.
Okay. Um, so, part of the bedroom is going to be, is the basement. And you're going to be. Well, you've got twenty-one from, from the ridge, but you're going to take the ridge down. You'll be fine. You'll be fine in terms of overall height.
Okay. I thought they were, they were, when you walked in, it was an eight, it was an eight-foot bill, but I wasn't, uh, a hundred percent.
But the, 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 the floor to ceiling surfaces are. Uh, the first, the, the basement where the bedroom number two is, it's seven foot nine and three-quarter. Uh, the first floor is eight feet. And the attic storage area is seven-six.
Okay.
Okay, so you're still under the overall limit.
Eight and seven-six. So, okay, so we're looking at under, just under sixteen feet.
Yeah.
The new build, okay.
Yeah.
And, uh, one of the things, um, another question. I didn't see where the stairs are going up to the attic. I saw the stairs going into the walkout basement. Would you mind just pointing out where the stairs are going to be to get to the attic, please?
Yeah, they're going to have to be in conjunction with the stairs, just like at a, right at your normal house. They've all got to be in the same, you know, it's the same, same footprint. One just goes down and one goes up. Uh, so this is the stair to the attic. Um, that's why this space is really limited, you know, up here, even though I'm calling it. Um, you know, unfinished, you know, attic space and finished attic space, um, you know, it's just, it's a really limited area. Simply because you have the, you have the stairs involved.
Okay, got it. So there's, there's going to be like a, a walk into a stairwell, one, there's a, a walk in, a landing. One goes down, one goes up.
Yes, sir. Yep. Just like any state, mo- most standard houses are, are like that.
Okay. Um, just, uh, my, my, well, final question for right now, just, uh, in terms of, um. Uh, snow removal plans, uh, with the current structure, like, where, where does the, I assume it gets piled? Does that get sort of pushed to the side, um, and sort of to the left or to the northern side of the, uh, structure today?
Yeah, I haven't owned it, uh, currently. Um, I, I, I do own a snow removal, you know, uh, business. But I would imagine that this, if you're looking at my screen, you'll, uh, take most of this stuff on the driveway and you'll winrow it to the right to get it off. There's a significant grass area between the, uh, property lines. And this snow here will then come up here and there is, you know, the parking lot does end here and there is probably. Five or six feet in between this property line, some snow can come here. And if you back up and push it this way, there's a very, very large area that could probably accommodate. All the snow here if you decided to put it in this snow location.
Okay. Um, do any other board members have questions with regards to sort of the site plan or the renderings at all? No, okay. Um, so I just want to also just note a couple of things just for.
Mister, Mister Chair, I'm sorry, I'm on my iPad and I couldn't figure out how to raise my hand, um, in time. Um, so because the integrity of the parking lot is, um, a lot of what's. Um, at issue here for a use variance, when you're, when you're demolishing, um. When you're digging into the, um, foundation. I'm not going to use very technical terms, that the foundation and then the stone wall underneath it. Um, what will be done to keep the integrity of the parking lot at that point? And I know we talked about this again at the site review a little bit, but, um.
So is, you're asking as soon as the building comes down, how are you going to keep this integrity?
Yeah, like even as you're demolishing it, since, um, since the parking lot is. We need to maintain the integrity of the hillside and to keep the parking area, um.
Yes, so.
Structurally safe for the cars and the tenants that use it. What, like, what do you do to keep it, um, from just all kind of crumbling down at that point?
Right.
Without the foundation there?
Yeah, so currently, right now, um, there's four cars being used at the, uh, multifamily. So that would be these four spaces right here. What I would do is I would, um, just block off this section during. The demolition and, you know, we're going to be working, um, you know, normal business hours, seven to three. So most of the, if they were to have any more people come and visit or other people come. Um, you know, they'd be able to utilize these spaces as well. But this would be a staging area for equipment and trucks that at the end of the day, we would have no equipment parked on. Um, the drivable areas, uh, they would all be staged over here. And while we were working, this would be our, more of our point of, uh, of, of working opposed to anywhere over here.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um. I don't see any other hands. All right. So I think at this time, I just want to, uh, just note a couple of things. Um, from stuff that we have gotten from other, um. Other boards. So I think first thing is, um, I just want to make sure that, um, everyone has received the, the fire chief letter. Dated October twenty-fifth, um, just sort of reviewing the fact that he's, he received it, reviewed it. Um, you know, confirmed that there was a fire in February two thousand and eight. Um, and, you know, really, I guess, nothing additional in terms of his comments there. Um, I assume no one has any other questions with regards to that. Um, the next thing is, um, just a planning board letter. Um, just in regards to precedent, so, um, precedent was something I had asked, um, town council to opine on. A couple of weeks ago, um, and I just want to quickly, uh, you know, ask the board. If, if they've received the, the email and have read it, um, and then if they had any sort of comments or questions. With regards to the precedent, um, email, I guess, uh, from town council at all. Nope. Okay. Um. And then, you know, just, you know, obviously noting the planning board letter that we also received as a board, just noting that they're concerned about, I guess, precedent. Um. Let's see. All right, uh, is there any other board questions at this?
Chair?
Yes, Brad.
Sure. Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yeah, Brad, yeah, Brad, go ahead.
I know we want a lot of, uh.
I'm sorry, Brad.
Yeah, I, uh, we went over a lot of information, a lot of questions, but, uh, I'm.
Am I the only one that can, am I the only one that cannot hear Brad?
I can't hear him.
Just a reminder that, that, uh.
I think you're saying, remember that it's a public hearing.
Yep, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I just want to, I know we're.
Yep.
Through a lot of information.
Yep.
Public here.
It's, it's on my list. Uh, so I guess, does the board have any other questions or comments with regards to this application at, at this time?
Um. The cord and I've had internet problems ever since.
Okay. Um, the staff, uh, Lori, Fred or Bob. Uh, at this particular time, do you guys have any comments or questions with regards to the case?
I, I have no additional comments at this time.
Okay. Okay. And then Fred, obviously.
Same here, no comments right now.
Great. All right, this is a public hearing, um, and as such, um, if anyone who is listening. Uh, would like to participate, um, if you could please raise your hand. Someone could just keep me honest here that there is only one other person in the attendee list.
Yeah, always one other attendee, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and that there's no one calling. And that there's no one calling in, looking to participate. Okay. Um, Mr. Coolie, at, at this time, is there any other additional information? Um, that you would like to present to the board, uh, with regards to this case?
No, what I, you know, I think what I would like to state is, um, you know, I've lived in North Pole for a long time, my, my whole life, actually. I'm, uh, thirty-four years old. I've been here. I was born and raised and, uh, you know, I take a lot of pride in the town. And, uh, there's nothing negative towards this project. Um, this is suitable for a family. Uh, the neighbors aren't complaining about it. The driveway works, the utilities work. Um, you know, I just hope that you take into consideration that, uh, you know, this is a project moving forward. That does something good for the community. Uh, it brings in taxes, um, it brings in, you know, a local family that can utilize the school. Uh, my son's in the school system here, um, and, uh, I just hope that, uh, you guys take all the variables into consideration and, uh, I'm looking forward to the outcome.
Okay, great. Um, so I think at this time, um, in order to be fair to both, uh, members of the board, um, and the applicant. Um, I, I'm going to ask that we continue the case, um, in that, just to give us some time to sort of process all the information. Um, that we sort of have received today. Um, I feel like this is a fairly complicated case, uh, with a lot of moving parts. Um, and I would like to. Um, have some sort of documentation that sort of just addresses all the, the stuff that, uh, what the, the comments from the different boards. Uh, all the things that we have discussed in terms of just finalizing the numbers. Get that into a document to allow us as a board to sort of just reassess, uh, the information and then. Give the applicant, uh, a chance to sort of look at the, you know, a potential decision, um, with all the findings of facts. Um, and allow them, uh, uh, one final opportunity to sort of provide any feedback if there's any, um. You know, uh, discrepancies.
Okay, so is it my understanding that you're closing a public hearing then?
No, so I, I think what we're, what I'm, what I'm asking to do is sort of just continue the public hearing. So that we can just keep everything open in case there is more information to come in, right? This will allow staff to sort of provide sort of documentation of a sort of a draft decision. Uh, for us so that we can look and just sort of just go through all the different, uh, components of the case. Um, and then at our next meeting, because the, the, the hearing would still be open. Um, if you, and obviously you would be given a, 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 a copy of sort of all the information that would be included in our decision. Um, you can provide any sort of feedback, whether you agree or disagree, or if there's conditions that you, um. Don't, just don't want or don't agree with, it, it gives you one final opportunity to do so before we sort of move forward.
Yeah, I think that's, uh, fair. If you're willing to, uh, draw something up and, and I can, uh, you know, review it. And go from there. So are you, um, presenting that, the next ZBA meeting next month? That, that we attend and, and, and discuss this further with, uh, the changes. the changes or the letter that you provide for me?
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, you know, essentially by if we were to continue this case and and keep the public hearing open, this allows us to sort of just take all the information that we have received here today, put it into a document, allow us as a board to sort of take one final look at it to make sure we agree with everything in there. It gives you the applicant an opportunity as well to sort of, you know, if there's things in there that are included that you don't agree with, whether it's conditions or whatever, you know, it gives you an opportunity because the problem that we've had in the past is, you know, if we were to close this case and make a decision and then write a decision, you know, there's no sort of going back to, you know, making changes, right? And so if we continue, if we keep the case open, right, and we sort of write sort of a a summary, the finding of facts, everything that will go into the decision, right, this gives us as a board an opportunity to make sort of fine tune the decision, it gives you the applicant to say, you know, this thing that's in the the decision I don't agree with, this is a condition that I will not abide by. Right? So it allows both sides to sort of make changes before closing the hearing.
Yeah, that that seems reasonable, I I you know, it's my understanding that you are the chair. I hope that the other applicants feel this way. I don't know if they were looking for closure tonight or not. But if that's how everyone else feels and the majority thinks that it should get pushed on and we can come back, then I'm fine with that.
Okay, Fred, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, so I may have to say, I mean, I've never had this request be asked by the chair of the zoning board in the past in all my time here. The process is that we gathered all the information. If we had if we had specific outstanding questions that we thought we needed additional information, we would ask the applicant if they would allow us to continue. But I, I mean, we've never, I I guess I'm just blown away by the idea of of asking an applicant to postpone a decision for at least another thirty days so that we can have what we used to create right here on the spot, the conditions and the the decision based on what we learned tonight, which I can't imagine what additional information we need from the applicant to move forward on on making a decision, but I mean, if he's amenable to it, that's fine. I just don't understand why we would leave it open and potentially, I mean, to be fair to Mr. Cooley, potentially allow for negative comments to come back to to dissuade what could be a positive vote tonight versus a negative one tomorrow. I I I'm just surprised. I mean, but I'm just one of five.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I would say is, you know, we have done things in the past a certain way. I guess, you know, we, I I'm sort of, you know, leveraging sort of the conversation we had earlier this summer, talking about a different framework in terms of how we make decisions when there are cases that do have a lot of moving parts in terms of, you know, different boards are involved and sort of just trying to come up with, you know, one final, you know, sort of draft decision of it, all the findings are facts so that there's no ambiguity, A for us as a board, right, and B for the applicant to provide any sort of, you know, I mean, I believe we had a case several months ago with Bartlett Street where we sort of made the decision, wrote the draft, and then had it sort of go back and wordsmith it a little bit. So, you know, I'd like to take our time. I mean, whether we get new information or not is, doesn't really make a difference to me. I would just rather have a sort of proper accounting of all the information that we have learned today to to better allow us to make a decision for for this case. Yeah, Mark.
I tend to agree with Fran in that I think the applicant has prevented all the presented all the facts that he has available to us. And and I I don't see that I have any questions on what this project is going to do and what its impact will be on the surrounding area and you know, I just have no problems with making a decision tonight.
I think what I'll do is I'll chime in here, Paul, and what I think we should do is make a decision whether to move forward with this project or not. And if you want to have a follow up, you know, meeting next month at the ZBA to go over, you know, some regulations that you would like to include if this, you know, now that you've decided that you want to move forward with it, then I think that that's probably what should happen at this time. That's the way I feel. I mean, I've I've put a lot of effort into this. I've spent months preparing for this meeting and and getting ready. And, you know, I I think at the end of the day, I should be left with a decision. And if you decide to approve it, then let's put a contingency on that next month. I'll come back and we can go over some endpoints if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, so I think, you know, generally, you know, once a case is closed, we really can't take any more new information. So that that's sort of the rub here, right? I mean, Fran, I understand your point, Mark, as well. And, you know, I do appreciate, obviously, the applicant putting in all the information. I'm more of just, you know, trying to just be fair to both sides to say, you know, we've spent the last sort of hour and a half taking in a whole bunch of information. I would like to just sort of, you know, crystallize that in a document so that there's no ambiguity from us, the board, or you, the applicant. I mean, you know, we can, you know, come up with the decision. You know, but if if we do close the case and then move forward, there's really no going back. That's that's sort of the the rub there, but.
I think I think I kind of agree with Fran and Mark. I mean, at the end of the day, I've stated everything I can state. I I've put my heart and soul into this. And I I've put a lot of time into creating something that, you know, I thought would be beneficial for, you know, myself, for the town, for the community, for the school system, for the downtown district. And I actually, you know, when different emails came in about changing certain things in the site plan, I added it and I adapted to every question that I had that I could to up until the last minute today.
Susie?
Hi, I can see where it would be good. We've had a lot of information come in in like the last forty-eight hours. And some of it, things had changed from other times, so I can see where it would be good to digest. I don't know about having like a draft opinion or anything to like go back and forth with because we would still, like the hearing's still open, so we haven't voted. So I don't know like how that goes. I don't know if Lori could, if Lori knows more, but like for me, with all the information, it would be helpful if, because things kind of evolved in the last week. If I had minutes, I wish I had a transcript of the meeting like right now that we just did to like review. But that's my input and I don't know if that helps or hurts either what either side, but.
Lori?
So just to clarify, if you close the public hearing tonight, but continue, you can continue the discussion to the next meeting. So then the ZBA members can provide input on the draft decision. However, the applicant will not be able to provide any input. If the public hearing is closed, if you continue the public hearing, then the applicant would have the ability to chime in on the decision. So it could be more of an active dialogue. So those are the two options. Right now I do not have a draft decision, so there's, we'd have to do that on the fly if you want to make the decision tonight.
Paul, can I chime in just one second?
Oh, good.
Yes, Jeff, go ahead.
Good. I just would like to make sure the applicant understands if the hearing is closed and it's and a decision is made, if it's a positive, it's the the conditions and the decision will have our conditions. If it's a negative, then he's barred for, is it two years from reapplying? So I think that's part of the background that maybe I'm not to speak for the chair, but I think that's where the chair is wants to make sure, you know, you know, it's an up or down. So that's that, and I also agree with Mark and Fran.
Hey, Paul. I just can't think of anything else that I would, that I would like to add for my initial statements over the last, you know, month or two of providing information and from the last almost two hours. I've passed ComCalm, I've passed groundwater, you know, I've got the fire department approval. The building department seems somewhat on board. There might be some things that need to be tweaked with Bob, but I'm willing to, you know, work with Bob with there. There are some things with Fred that are minor stuff that 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 needing to get figured out as well, but I think I think at the end of the day, I'd like to close it and just get a decision.
Okay.
Chair?
Brad, was that you?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes, sorry. I don't know why my internet's screwed up. There's still a couple outstanding questions. I have a town engineer, the the drywells on the site plan. I'd like to know where those are and I would like the blessing of our town engineer. Also, the current assessment, you mentioned earlier, eight bedrooms, not the current six. So these are just a couple outstanding questions that I would like to have answered, especially the fact that it's already a non-conforming lot, it's pre-existing non-conforming, and I just want to make sure that everything is is buttoned up and we have all our questions or any outstanding items wrapped up before we make a final decision.
Hey, Paul, there is a hand raised in the attendees if you're still accepting public comments.
Okay, yeah. Scott? Scott, I made you available to talk if you, can you hear me?
Yeah, thanks, Paul, appreciate it. So Scott Rogers, twenty-six, Omaha Drive, for the select board and liaison to the ZBA. I just wondered, Paul, is it is a matter of needing just more time for the board to deliberate and and incorporate the new information?
Yeah, no, so I think my the reason that I asked for a continuation, right? So if we close the case today and then deliberate, we can either make a decision today or we can postpone it. But once we close the case, we cannot take any more new information in, right? And so which which, you know, so if we have additional questions while we deliberate, right, or we think about this case, right, we cannot take in any more new information once it's closed, right? Really, the purpose is to sort of document everything that we have discussed tonight and have something on a piece of paper that we as a board can look at and all agree that that these are all the, you know, findings of fact, the description of the project, what exactly constitutes the the variance ask for the three-pronged approach that, you know, the applicant is doing. And then, of course, give the applicant a chance to look at that document, right, and say, you know, you got this wrong, or, you know, I don't agree with this. Right? That's that's the idea behind sort of asking for the continuation to next month, not that we're going to necessarily take in more information. It's just going from what we have just done for the last hour and a half, right, to the actual final signed decision, right, just allowing both sides, the board and the applicant, to just agree that, yes, what occurred over the last ninety minutes and all of the documentation that we have received over the last thirty days is is encapsulated within sort of a draft decision so that there's no ambiguity from either side. Right? And so, I mean, in in my estimation, it's not whether we're we're going in favor or against or trying to look for other information. That's not the goal, right? It's just to say, hey, as a board, this is everything that we have talked about for the last, you know, hour and a half. These are all the documents that we've received. It gives the applicant a chance to say, no, you got this wrong. This condition is not correct. You know, whatever the case is, based on everything that we have discussed over the last, you know, for the time of the meeting. That's really all it is.
Yeah, so if I if I understand, then, you know, it would be, you you could close the hearing tonight, but then take the time to draft the decision, deliberate further, make a decision in your next meeting. But what you're you're holding open is the flexibility to have some back and forth with the applicant some more on the details of the decision.
That's correct. Yes, if we close the case today and we deliberate and we do not make a decision, right? And we kick it to next month, right? The applicant, we can't get, we obviously can't take any more new information. Whatever we deliberate and whatever we discuss, you know, the applicant can't say like I agree or disagree. But, you know, it's it's more of just keeping the flexibility of for the board and the applicant to make sure that everything that has been discussed and documented is available for change or flexible, right?
Yeah, and I think the the situation here is you've got enough information that just came in this week, so to speak, that you don't have the normal drafted conditions that you would normally have.
That's correct. I mean, I would view this case as a very complicated case. There are a lot of moving parts to it. You know, it's not a simple case, so there's different boards that that I've weighed in with conditions. And I just want to make sure that we have everything documented correctly and still allow the applicant to sort of provide feedback for any, you know, draft or decision.
Yeah. Hey, thanks. Thanks for taking the, you know, the the discussion and and an open comment. I appreciate that. Thanks a lot, Paul.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Paul, can you just take a two-minute break for a second?
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chair, while we're waiting, would you entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two meeting as submitted?
Sure.
Well, I move that we approve the minutes from the September twenty-seventh, twenty-two meeting as submitted.
I second.
Okay.
That's okay. I think Suzie Suzie got the second there. So Fran made a motion and Suzie seconded to approve the minutes from the September, what was the date again? Sorry.
Twenty-second, twenty-seventh.
September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two minutes. Mark?
I.
Fran?
Hi.
Suzie?
Hi.
Brad?
I.
And I am an I as well. So Fran, motion. Suzie? Second.
All right, Paul.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to just, you know, talk to my wife. Obviously, we're in this project together and want to make sure we're both in the same board, but what I think I'd like to do is close the meeting, vote tonight, and next meeting we can deliberate. And I realize that I'm waving my, you know, right next meeting to, you know, be able to participate, but I just feel strongly about this project and I would just like. I just feel strongly about this project, and I would just like to close the meeting tonight.
Okay. I mean, so we, again, if we close this meeting tonight and we make a decision, then there is no sort of next meeting, right? So, you know, the decision will be made at that point. And, you know, the draft decision will go out and that's, you know, that's really where it stands. Is that?
Yes, sir. Nope, I completely understand.
Okay. Does anyone have any other comments or questions, I guess, regards to this case?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I still have two outstanding questions on this application regarding the assessment about the number of bedrooms and the drywells for the town engineer. So I would, I would like to continue this meeting to our November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two meeting, this application, I shouldn't say. And it's not to grab any extra feedback or anything like that. There's just two outstanding questions that I have, and I can't make a proper decision tonight without those answers.
Uh, okay. Yeah, I think that would be with the town assessor. That's not something that I can, you know, do on my own. I can't create a plan. That would be the town assessor. And with the groundwater overlay district, it's already been discussed with Fred Litchfield as the town engineer. Obviously, he's more qualified than me to tell me what I need to do with the groundwater to discuss the drywells. That was part of my groundwater overlay. If Fred wants to jump on real quick and give you a brief of what he kind of thinks needs to happen over there, I would appreciate it. If not, then I put my trust in Fred to make the right decision as an engineer opposed to me not with that degree.
Mr. Chair, I'll try to address that best I can. The goal, the discussion with the groundwater committee was that the recommendation would include the need for the drywells. The design will have to be provided by the applicant, his engineer, and reviewed by me. It's something that can simply be made part of a condition of approval if that's what the board chooses to do. We also would require, they typically, what they'll do is they'll do an assumption of the soil qualities for absorbing the water from the roof. And then prior to construction, we would require a permeability test to verify that that assumption was correct. But it's, unless they want to do a design between now and the next meeting, which wasn't the goal of the groundwater advisory committee, was just to have it as a requirement prior to construction. There's really nothing else for us to review, for me to review at this point. I don't do the design for them. He does the design. I do a review, and then they build accordingly once the, the design is approved. That hopefully clarifies that.
Brad, was that? I guess that was your answer on the groundwater, but you still had an open question, I believe, in regards to the assessor's office?
Right.
Okay.
Yep, to make sure.
All right.
To our bedrooms, number of dwellings aligned with the number of parking spaces and adding the, the, the second dwelling in the back.
Okay.
Yes, that would be the parking requirement, which is right here. This is a breakdown of the parking requirements. So we have adequate parking. More than adequate, actually.
Fully, but based on the, so I, I'd like to see the assessor's office. Mr. Chair, you mentioned eight bedrooms, and we have currently six bedrooms. And eight bedrooms plus the additional two.
Is not a bedroom.
Still uncompliant.
Yeah, so I, I think, I, I, I think there's a, there's a disconnect between how the assessor is to find this property and sort of the proposal that's currently before us. So Brad, is your, is your question is that you just want to get more information from the assessor's office in terms of where the disconnect is?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Want to make sure we're in compliance with the number of parking spots by our bylaws.
Hey, Brad, I'm willing to put a condition on there that you and any board members on the ZBA can do a walkthrough on that three-family to show that there's six bedrooms. There's three bedrooms on the first floor, two bedrooms on the second floor, and one bedroom, and that's a condition that I'm willing to, uh, you know, put in there at any time, anybody can come. All I need to do is give my tenants a twenty-four-hour notice that anybody can walk through that building and show how many bedrooms are there. I've got, I've got nothing to hide.
Okay. Uh, Mark?
Yeah, um, I think the building inspector can simply say that, look, based on the fact that there are six bedrooms divided, as the applicant says, with a one, two, and a three-bedroom in the multi-family unit and two more bedrooms in the, uh, in the proposed, uh, construction, that either these ten parking spots are adequate or it's not. You know, Bob, do you, is this adequate?
Kind of an unusual thing for me to do, but I could always, you know, either tour the building. One, one thing to remember is that the assessors do their job based upon what they observe. And they don't necessarily refer to any codes, whether it's zoning or building. They literally go by what they see at that moment on site. You know, if it's, if it's a bedroom, you know, they're not going to look for smoke detectors. They're not going to look for window egress size. They're not going to look for emergency escape and rescue openings, you know, carbon monoxide detectors. They're not going to look for any of that. So you know, it, it, should I take a walk through the building? I'd be happy to, you know, to, to, to see what's there. And, and we can, and I can reconcile it against what the, what the assessors have, and I can probably go out with the assessors as well. You know, just to, you know, have both of us on the same page in terms of what we, what we see out there.
But I guess going back is, is the ten parking spot space is adequate for the six bedrooms as, I mean, for the total of eight bedroom?
Well, it's, it goes by, you know, multi-family, and it goes by the, the, the metrics in the, on the plans. You know, multi-family, a single-bedroom unit is, uh,
But, but, Bob, I have it pulled up on the screen right here.
Yeah.
If everything, I, I mean, I don't know if everyone, if I'm still sharing the screen, but the breakdown is here with the town bylaws.
Yeah, it's, it's one space per studio. It's one and a half for one bedroom. It's two spaces per unit with two or more bedrooms. Then you add ten percent for visitor parking. You don't have to worry about, in this case, any kind of handicapped accessibility because it's, it, it doesn't qualify under AAB. So, you know, the, the, you know, the parking demand goes back to how many bedrooms we're going to have. And, uh, you know, so what we, what might be best is just to take a quick run through the building and see what's there.
Yeah, and like I said, if that's a condition upon approval, I'm, I'm more than happy to take Bob through the building at any time. That's, that's not an issue at all.
Fran, I think you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair, since I started this conversation. And I apologize. I, I thought saying that we should move forward and close the hearing tonight would make this streamlined and the process completed. Obviously, we're spending more time on debating whether or not we should keep it open or not keep it open, asking the applicant if he would allow us to continue it. I don't think we're doing him justice by now closing it, because I feel like we are all over the place individually and collectively as to where we think this application should be, could be, will be. So I am going to retract my comment that we should close it tonight and say we need to just really regroup here and figure out what it is we need, what it is we have, and what is the objective, you know, what is the end game result here? Because this just, just sounds so messy now that I'm uncomfortable on keeping it open and closed, but I don't want to do a disservice to Mr. Cooley by prematurely closing it when, when people just seem uncertain. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. And I'll just say, you know, back to my original thing is if we keep this open and we just regroup all the, the, the information that we have received tonight and go through everything again, by keeping it open allows both us as a board and the applicant to still provide feedback either way, right? And the flexibility is there to do so by keeping it open. Whereas if we keep it closed, we sort of lose that flexibility and lose any sort of, right, just, you know, lose the flexibility and abilities just to, to make any, you know, additional comments. But Suzie, you have your hand raised.
Hi, um, I think, I think because, um, that, as Fran said, the discussion's kind of all over the place. We're still in the public hearing. We haven't even gotten to, you know, the part about discussing, like, we're not even out of the public hearing to discuss the three-pronged test for use variance or anything yet. And I, and I know the applicant, I know that you guys have put in a lot of hard work on this, and it might seem that it's like prolonging the stress, but I think that this will help everybody. So I'm going to make a motion to continue just to make sure that we have all the facts. Because I don't see, even if we close the public hearing, I don't see us getting to a point where we can even vote tonight. And that could be very frustrating over the next month as well. So, uh, Mr. Chair, can I make a motion to continue tonight's hearing to the next meeting on the date, which I think is, um,
November twenty.
I think is November twenty-second. Is that the?
Yes.
Or is it the fifteenth?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
The twenty.
At seven P M would be great.
Okay, November twenty-second at seven P M?
Okay. Suzie made a motion to continue hearing.
I'll second.
Fran seconded. Um, we get to a roll call vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Fran?
Yes.
Mark?
No.
Brad?
Aye.
Uh, and I am an aye as well. Okay, um, so this case has been continued to the next meeting, which is dated for November twenty-second at seven P M.
All right. Thank you very much, Paul. If there's any additional information or anything you need from me, just please get it to me in a timely manner, and I will do the best to answer. We'll provide any questions. If there is a walkthrough needed, just please let Bob know, and Bob can get in contact with me, and we can go over that. And if any other board members would like to do a site visit, you're more than happy to come. I know two members did before, and we'll go from there. I appreciate the time. Not the, uh, not the answers that I wanted tonight, but I appreciate you, Paul, you know, looking into it and looking at the best interest of everybody. And we'll go from there.
Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you very much, and we do appreciate the, uh, the presentation tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Bye.
Okay, so we've, uh, we've approved the minutes from the September meeting. Confirming our next meeting is going to be November twenty-second at seven P M. Are there any other business items that may legally become before the board? We do have also an executive session as well after this meeting. Okay, so Lori, do we need to just, um, close this hearing and then we will re-log into executive session?
Uh, so what you'll have to do is read the language for the executive session and then announce that this, this meeting will not be convening after the executive session. So then you'll have to take the roll call vote in order to go into executive session. Then we'll leave this meeting. You have a separate login for the executive session, so click on the login. I may not be able to join you because I'm having computer issues, but I'm going to let David Danaski know. He said that he is available. His meeting got out early. So I will let him know that he can join you.
Lori, do you have the, the language needed to sort of close this hearing to then reopen?
I do.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it?
Uh, sure, that'd be great.
Executive session pursuant to mass, uh, so somebody is going to make a motion to go into an executive session pursuant to mass general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, subsection three, litigation regarding pending land use litigation. Berlin Landing Realty Trust versus Northborough Zoning Board of Appeals, Land Court Number Twenty, M I S C zero, 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 five, three, eight, J S D R, and appeal number S J C hyphen one, three, two, seven, two. Due to the chair's determination that the discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the board. So somebody wants to make that motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like the motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
Uh, Mark made a motion. Fran seconded. Roll call vote. Mark?
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
Suzie?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. All right, so this, uh, session of the meeting will,
What about me, Paul?
Brad.
Oh, Brad. Sorry. Brad?
Aye.
I'm going to forget about you. All right, um, so this section of the meeting will be over, and then we will log into the new separate meeting that we received. Is that right?